Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, June 22, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. The flag is behind me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we're just going to start the evening with a special presentation, exciting, a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. So I think we have a visitor, and Dr. Rose is going to get down to the floor. Come on up, Nancy.
This month is Park and Recreation Month, and I have to say, our Parks and Rec is very dear to my heart. And I was just looking, we were just looking, I just signed my grandson up for a camp. And we were going through my file, and here I had my son, my other grandson, and it shapes our lives, Parks and Rec. It shapes a lot of kids in our neighborhood. It just keeps them on a healthy and a good track. And the amount of work that you and your team do is phenomenal. And we see that from Halloween happenings to Mrs. Claus to our Sounds of Summer concerts. Every month, there is something better from Parks and Rec, from our user groups and our baseball, basketball, pickleball. I mean, there are so many things in that book, our Parks and Rec book, that it's just phenomenal. And you guys just do the best job ever, and I cannot be any more proud to present this award. So I'll just read a couple of things from it. Parks and Rec is vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community. Parks and Rec provides healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. It goes on and on and just says how wonderful it makes our community. So I just want to say thank you to you, Nancy, and to your whole team. Everybody does a wonderful job.
Thanks. Thank you. I just want to say thank you and let everyone know that, you know, this isn't just happened. 1985, the National Recreation and Parks Association began celebrating July as Parks and Recreation Month to recognize how important recreation is in our lives. Kim took my spiel, but the Parks and Recreation Department provides opportunities for all residents to be active, healthy, and thrive at all ages and abilities. I could list the programs and services, but we'd be here all night. But I will tell you that we prepare a quarterly brochure, which we mail to all our township residences. This publication is just an introduction of all that is offered. Once you visit our website and participate in one class or a camp or purchase tickets, you will know that Parks and Recreation is a government service that you're happy to have. This coming July, the township will be celebrating the dedication of the Miracle League Playground at the municipal park, or as many people lovingly refer to it as the Blue Park. I think it will always be the Blue Park. There's even more blue now than there ever was before. Like everyone else, I'm anxiously waiting the opening of this all-inclusive playground where everyone can play. We just need to be patient a little bit longer for the last odds and ends to complete, and I promise it will be open before July 1st, if not sooner. We've been getting a lot of inquiries and a lot of questions. I thought, you know, this is a good audience people will see. Lastly, I just wanted to acknowledge my staff. I asked them all to attend so they can be recognized for their hard work. However, each one of them this week in particular has been coming in early and staying late, as this is the first week of camp. It's always a rough time for us. As a matter of fact, I think we should celebrate Parks and Recreation in February when it's just a little less hectic. But thank you again, supervisors, for acknowledging July as Parks and Recreation Month, and it's good.
All right, thanks, Kim. I didn't hear you.
What's the matter?
Thank you. Nancy, thanks for coming. I think we probably all echo Kim's comments. We have just a phenomenal Parks and Rec program here. The staff, they pull off things that I don't know how they pull it off sometimes, and really flawlessly, at least to us, you know? So maybe you guys know the real truth behind, but thank you so much for everything you do. Next, we're going to move to public comment, and this is public comment for agenda items only. So this is the time where you can speak for anything that's listed as an agenda item. And I think we have one person that wants to speak tonight on one of the agenda items. Linda, I don't know how you say it, Stith? Thank you. So if you come up and just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Linda Stith, and I live at 544 Polinsky Road, Ivyland. And so I'm here, I would like, I'm here to hear the plans that are being presented about the construction that is going to be taking place next door to my house. And I have concerns about water management for this property because they are planning on building, I think, four houses and access road. And so there are, you know, there are a lot of issues that need to be addressed, and I am concerned about the water. The property is the same size as my property, and we had a lot of issues that we had to make sure to take care of before we could build a house. So for building four houses and an access road, I'm concerned about impervious surface, where they're going to discharge all this drainage water and that type of thing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your comments. I think you'll be able to hear during the presentation, and we also have our township engineer here, so if anything comes up during that, she'll be able to jump in. Thank you for your comments. Next, consent items, approval of minutes. Paula?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, I request that the minutes of May 25th be approved by unanimous consent.
Okay, thanks, Paula. Accounts payable, Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for June 8, 2022. Total all funds, $722,852.14. And I also have the bills list for June 22, 2022, $798,232.95.
Thank you. I'll accept a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Motion passes. Thank you. Onto new business. First item is consideration of the Northampton Glen subdivision, and I believe we have some folks here. Please come up to the table, and I'll turn that over to Barry.
Sure. Thanks, Adam. If I can have the applicant come up and just please introduce yourselves.
Sure, I'm Ed Murphy tonight, here on behalf of Toner Homes. To my left is Vince Fioravanti, the project engineer.
Good, okay. So for the board's benefit and for the residents of the township benefit, we have up on the screen the proposed layout of this land development. The proposed development is located along Polinsky Road between Foxcroft and Haprell Roads, consisting of a 4.9 acre lot, and it's an AR1 zoning. Currently, the site contains approximately 1,700 square-foot home and a 630 square-foot garage, a paved driveway, and some natural vegetation, and a wooded area. It's the intention, it's the intention of the applicant to subdivide the property into four separate lots and for easement for Road A. And you can see by the illustration up on the chart there, the four houses that they're planning for. The existing dwelling garage will be demolished, and a new single-family dwelling will be constructed on Lot 1. Lots 2, 3, and 4 will also be developed with single-family dwellings. Public water and sewer are proposed to serve the site. This proposal has also gone through our zoning caring board, and also for our planning commission, has received approval from those various agencies. In addition to that, we have waiver request letter that was dated June 9, 2022. That's been reviewed by this board. We have a report from our engineers, Gilmore Associates, Penone Associates. We have a traffic study that was done by McMahon. We also have a letter, this one, to the Township Planning Commission, and the Township Planning Commission voted for, to approve this. And then finally, we also have the Fire Marshal memo, who reviewed it, Bucks County Planning Commission, and that completes the review process. I have, you know, a motion to give. We had some general questions, and, you know, I welcome if anybody else has questions about the stormwater management. I appreciate the fact you have some concerns there. We are looking at the four lots being developed. One of the open issues we had is that whether the street would be dedicated. And a township preference would be a dedicated road that way. You have to have the road constructed to the, you know, specifications of the township.
Correct.
And we think that's to the benefit of the residents, both in this development and elsewhere in that neighborhood, so.
Correct. Agreed.
So that's the intention, to have a dedicated road?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And then there was also discussion on the sidewalks, and I think it was proposed that we would do a fee in lieu of sidewalks?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so we presented some numbers for that, and I think the township's in general agreement with that. The thought process here would be is that on Polinsky, there's no sidewalks on either side of the road, and to have a sidewalk on Polinsky would not make sense because you would have, you know, basically a sidewalk beginning and ending and going to nowhere. So it's not a good use of funds. And then, within the development, I guess the plan would be you would just pay a fee in lieu of a sidewalk inside the development, or is the plan to put one inside?
No, correct. It would be a fee in lieu of installing the sidewalks along the side of the cul-de-sac where the homes would be located. I believe the fee that's been discussed includes the property frontage on Polinsky plus
The sidewalk, okay.
Side of the cul-de-sac, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then what the township does, and the planners and expertise, they look through each site and make a determination based on the neighborhood, the, how many houses in the development. And I think the thought process here is having four houses here. Obviously, we want to have a safe passage from the houses to the street for children to be picked up, things like that. But we thought that that street, since it's in the cul-de-sac, a fee in lieu of sidewalks would be better. And also, we thought it would be better to, you know, as opposed to having sidewalks on Polinsky that could confuse people, they'd do a fee in lieu of, for that, too.
Right.
So that's good. And then, for the township, for everybody's benefit, what we do is for the sidewalks, we actually take that money, we put it into a reserve account for the sidewalks throughout the township, whether it be done in Holland or Richwood and other parts of town. So we do that. So, and then maybe I could, if I could maybe mandate, I know one of the residents had a concern here about the stormwater management, and there's, you know, maybe you could go through the process of some of the seepage strains that have been planned for the site. And the whole, the process of the township is that any water generated on a site has to stay within the site. So the last thing we want to do is have new developments happen where, you know, any water, rainwater that comes on the site, you know, runs off to other people's property and causes problems. So the engineering department's done a lot of efforts to make sure that doesn't happen. But I'll let Amanda explain that a little bit.
Sure. Yeah, stormwater management in general is regulated by the State Department of Environmental Protection. So they certainly have strict regulations that the township then adopts as part of their ordinance. So that any developer would be required to follow those ordinance and thereby then the DEP regulations as well. It's a bit tough to see on that rendering, but the stormwater management facilities are light green rectangles on each lot. So there's, on the first two lots, they're, I would say, in the front yard, and on the rear two lots, they're in the side or backyard. And then there's also an underground seepage bed under the road, kind of at the intersection of Polinsky Road and the proposed Road A. So there's five stormwater management facilities. Likely, all of the roof drains, that sort of thing, from the buildings would be tied into those seepage beds and would be, you know, following the regulations from DEP and also from the township ordinances. There's a review process to this. So are these stormwater management designs 100% complete at this point? No, they're not. We still have review comments with, with the design engineer, and I'm sure he can answer any questions as well about the design itself. However, this is a typical process that this would go through the review process if the board does grant approval for the land development in general this evening, and then would be contingent upon the two of us kind of working out the details of the remainder of the stormwater management design.
Sure. Adam, you okay?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Sure. Come up to the microphone if you wouldn't mind.
The question that I'm wondering about is, when you say tied in, they're tied in together, and they're going to go under the street, they're not, I'm concerned if they're going to, planning on tying into my part of the drainage that we were required to build. And I, because I saw them taking pictures of it, and I'm not particularly happy about the idea of being tied in together.
Sure. I'm not completely familiar with your drainage facility. I apologize. But they are not, I don't believe they're all tied into each other, nor are they tied into the subsurface basin under the road. They likely would have some sort of overflow pipe to it that would then daylight to a downhill location.
Where exactly is your lot?
I'm the one at the bottom.
So on the, on the top of the plan?
The bottom.
I think you're talking about the bottom plan.
Yeah.
The bottom of the plan, okay. So you're essentially uphill of our site.
I'm right next door.
Okay.
If you're looking
But if I'm looking, if I'm on Polinsky, looking into the new cul-de-sac, you're on the left. Okay.
And my property's the same size as this property.
Okay. And you're essentially uphill of us.
Okay.
So our water is never going to impact you, if it's possible.
Your plan is not to tie into my
Absolutely not.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a good, it's a good question, but the water management, stormwater management is highly regulated, regulated now by DEP. In the past, a lot of times, housing developments were put up, and quite honestly, a lot of the rainwater from roofs, things like that, just went down the downspouts and went onto people's lawns and just went wherever they went.
Right.
And now the state has worked carefully to minimize that. And the general policy, basically, is any new site that's developed, any type of stormwater management that is generally on that site has to stay on that site. So like, for example, my house was built about three or four years ago. All my gutters and everything else actually leave, run right into a stormwater management system, and it's detained on my property.
Right.
So it's not, you know, going to anybody else's property. The same conditions will happen here. What our township engineer will do, will work very closely with the group here to make sure they have a stormwater management system that's site-specific for that site. And it's not going to be pushing water on your side or even down the street either, so.
It'd also be inspected during construction and afterwards make sure it's done properly. So everyone's contributing to protect you.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it's a very, it's a good question, good comment, so. Amanda, I'm sorry, Adam. Well, I'd like to just maybe read a motion, and then
Go one second, I think Bob had a
Yeah, just for clarification, the plan shows a 24-foot wide cartway, but our ordinance requires a 31-foot cartway. The township has in the past approved 26 feet, which I think would be the minimum cartway we could, we could consider.
Excellent.
So, okay?
Yes.
Good.
That would have first be contingent upon truck turning templates for emergency vehicles, that sort of thing.
Yeah. So we want to make sure, you know, if a fire truck had to come down the street, it'd be able to turn around the street, things like that. There's also a seepage tank, I believe, on the driveway that's in the proposed plan, so you would need to work with the township engineer on that to make sure that's properly relocated.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so that'd be very important.
You have a motion, Barry?
Yeah, I do. So if I could just, I'll read this. So I move for approval of the Northampton Glen subdivision preliminary slash final plan of subdivision and land development, SLD 22-4, subject to compliance with the Gilmore Associates Review Letter dated May 6, 2022, the Penone Associates Review Letter dated May 3, 2022, and then Mahone Associates Review Letter dated May 5, 2022. The Fire Marshal's Memo dated May 11, 2022 is also recommended that the requested waivers be granted. Approval is subject to the following conditions. So this board and all the other boards have reviewed all these detailed letters to make sure we're in full compliance. And the first of five conditions is that the applicant shall enter into a land development agreement, an escrow agreement, in a form acceptable to the township solicitor engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. So that's an agreement that the filings with the township to make sure it's in them. A fee in lieu of sidewalks required based on the calculations by the township engineer for the terms of the development agreement. A fee in lieu of tree replacements shall be required for the terms of the development agreement in accordance to the applicant's proposed tree replacement plan. A fee in lieu of recreation open space shall be submitted in an amount of $6,584.86 for each new lot for the terms of the development agreement. And the fifth item is the applicant is responsible for obtaining any outside approvals that may be necessary, including but not limited to DEP, to Conservation District, PennDOT, and the Municipal Authority. Further, approval is granted for submission of any documents that may be required as part of the sewage facilities planning process.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion?
Just consistent with the discussion, is it your intention, Mr. Moore, that the motion would also state that the road will, the cul-de-sac, Road A, I believe it's shown on the plan, will be offered for dedication to the township?
Yes.
And the township will accept dedication, provided that the road has a minimum width of 26 feet, that it complies with emergency vehicle turning templates, and that the stormwater management seepage basin located within the roadway near Polinsky Road will be relocated from out of the paved cartway area.
And that the road be constructed in accordance with township
Township specifications.
Right, yes.
You're okay with the amendment? Barry?
Yes, I am correct. Okay.
Kim, you're okay?
Yeah, I'm okay with
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other discussion, Bob?
No, I'm satisfied with these provisions, and I actually live about a mile from here, so I'll be keeping a close eye on it as it proceeds. Good luck.
Barry, anything else?
The only thing I want to clarify, so the agreed, agreed-upon fee in lieu of, it's $30,369 is what I think the applicant and the township has agreed to. The parking recreational fee is $26,339, and then there's a tree replacement fee of $10,000 for the trees in the property.
Correct.
So, all right. So I just want to make sure that's all agreeable to the applicant?
It is. Those conditions are accepted.
Okay. Kim, any other comment?
No, I think that covered it all.
Paula?
Very extensive. Thanks, Barry.
No comment from me. It looks like a nice development. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Great.
Thanks for coming. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Moving on, next, next item. Consider 2022 Greenway Trail and Recreation Program Grant Application on Newtown-Richburg Road. Paula?
Okay, I'm, I will consider a motion for the 2022 Greenway Trail and Recreation Program Grant Application to construct pedestrian crossing right at Fur Avenue and Newtown-Richburg Road. It's very well, very much needed there.
Thank you. So that's the motion?
Yes.
Now, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, Paula?
No, I think it's about time we get it. It's, it's a good spot.
Who seconded? Bob, was I?
I did.
Any further comments?
No, thank you.
Barry?
The only other comment is that I agree with Paula. This is well needed. This is right in front of Tyler Park, and a lot of residents want to get from one side of town to Tyler Park, including myself, and trying to cross Newtown-Richburg Road is almost impossible. So this is going to be a huge benefit for our residents getting to Tyler Park, so.
Yeah.
Kim?
I also agree with, with everybody. I have heard from residents who have told me that they have trouble crossing the street there. They want to go to Tyler State Park. And I think it's, it's going towards our dream of having our township all connected with trails.
Sure.
So I think it's great.
I also agree. I think anything we can do for safety is, is great. This will be a marked crossway with, that'll have flashing lights, so when someone wants to cross, they can, they push a indicator button, the lights will stop, start to flash, and then the traffic will have to stop and let the people cross. It's really a great way. And it is, as Kim said, the interconnectivity of the trails in this town. It's, it's a slow process, but it's happening. It's moving forward. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next up, Kim, an amendment to the SWIP-SWAC intergovernmental agreement.
Yes. Northampton Township has been a member of the Southwestern Bucks County Solid Waste Advisory Committee since 1985, and has jointly bid waste collection and disposal with its partner communities, Upper and Lower Southampton Township, since that time. In the recent years, it has become increasingly clear that the initial advantages of jointly collecting and disposing of solid waste with other municipal partners does not provide the economies of scale that previously existed. In fact, the current intermunicipal contract has become the largest publicly bid waste contract in Pennsylvania, and limits the number of private waste haulers willing to submit bids for this service. Following extensive discussion with our municipal partners, the administration has recommended that the township withdraw from the participation in SWIP-SWAC and independently bid its waste that the township withdraw from the participation in SWIP SWAC and independently bid its waste collection needs with the current contract with Mascaro and Sons expiring on December 31, 2022. The township would continue to honor all other existing waste disposal contracts through their termination dates if the board agrees to withdraw from the committee. This includes two contracts with Waste Management for disposal of yard waste and recycling materials, and a contract with Waste Innovations for household trash disposal. Our solicitor has prepared an amendment to the intergovernmental intermunicipal agreement between Northampton, Upper Southampton, and Lower Southampton Townships, adopted by the parties in 1993, following the withdrawal of Wormminster Township in 1993. The amendment accentuates the withdrawal by Northampton Township from SWIP SWAC and acknowledges the continuation of existing, existing disposal contracts executed by the respective municipalities through their terms. With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt the proposed amendment to the 1993 intergovernmental intermunicipal agreement between Northampton Township, Upper Southampton Township, and Lower Southampton Township withdrawing membership in the Southwest Bucks County Solid Waste Advisory Committee effective upon execution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comment, Kim? Any further comment?
Yeah, it's, I think it's time, we're, we're getting way too big to, for, for to handle. We need to go back to a little smaller. So I think this is a great move.
Barry, any?
No, I agree with Kim. I think it's, you know, it's a smart move for us, going to put us in a better position negotiating contracts going forward, so I agree.
Bob?
I agree for a variety of reasons, including those stated by Ms. Rose and Mr. Moore, I agree.
Thanks. Paula?
I agree too.
No comment from me. Mr. Paizo?
Just so the, the record is clear, while I did have some input into it, and of course have reviewed it, the amendment was not prepared by me, but by the solicitor for Upper South, who serves as the lead agency among the three communities in SWIP SWAC, so. But I have reviewed it and I believe it appropriately reflects the township's intention vis-à-vis its withdrawal from, from the consortium.
Thanks, Joe, that is, that is important. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, consider awards for certain fuels. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The township advertised for bids to purchase unleaded regular gasoline based on the bids, which differentiate between 5,999 gallons or fewer as compared to 6,000 gallons or greater. If I may make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I move to award a contract to Regans Incorporated in Vineland, New Jersey for unleaded regular gasoline and ultra-low sulfur diesel, 5,999 gallons or fewer, and award a contract to Petroleum Traders Corporation in Fort Wayne, Indiana for unleaded regular gasoline and ultra-low sulfur diesel above 6,000 gallons or greater for the contract period between August 1, 2022 and July 31, 2023 at the bid prices quoted to the Bucks County Consortium. And I would note no bids were received for heating oil.
Thanks. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any comments? Any further comments?
No, it's a necessity. I don't want to discuss what the prices are, but it's a necessity. We're all suffering with them, we have no choice.
And we do need fuel. Anything else, Kim?
No.
Barry?
Nope.
Paula?
No.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Final new business, traffic signal maintenance contract. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bids were opened on June 9th of this year for a contract to service and maintain the township's traffic signal system consisting of 27 traffic signals and one flashing warning device. If I may make a motion.
Please.
I move to award a contract to Armour &amp; Sons Electric Incorporated in Langhorne, Pennsylvania for traffic signal system preventative and response maintenance for a two-year period at the fixed and hourly rates outlined in their bid proposal form.
Is there a second?
My second.
Any other comment, Bob?
Nope, this one's pretty self-explanatory, no comment.
Paula?
No, I think it's great.
Kim?
Yeah, I think it's, Armour &amp; Sons have done an excellent job with our, our traffic signals.
Agreed. Barry?
No comment.
No comment from me. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Hey, that concludes our new business for the evening, and we'll move on to liaison reports. Dr. Rose?
Yes, I'm going to start off with the senior center. There's a lot going on at the senior center. It is busier than ever. The schedule is filled with a variety of fun and exciting classes and programs to keep seniors, 55 or better, healthier and active. It's never too late to get involved in an old hobby or learn something new. There's something for everyone. A new activity on the calendar is Be Balanced, and the focus of this class is to improve balance, endurance, and strength, which is the key to preventing falls. It's fun and beneficial at the same time, and the teacher is phenomenal, very positive and upbeat. On Tuesday, July 26, the center will be hosting another program in celebration of our township's 300th anniversary. This program is free and open to the public. It's a look back at how fabric was created and how it plays a key role in the lives of who lived during the 18th century. The guest speaker will discuss and demonstrate the spinning process using the Great Wheel. Participants will also have the opportunity to try it out as well. Please call the center to RSVP to this event. On another note, as many of you are aware, there's an awesome party room at the center available to rent. It's a beautiful 3,000-square-foot room that's a perfect venue for your next celebration, meeting, or special event. Now on to Parks and Rec. As was announced earlier, July has been proclaimed Parks and Rec Month. I hope that our Parks and Rec staff knows how much we all appreciate what they do, but I also hope that other agencies and organizations that provide recreational services realize that this month celebrates them as well. We are fortunate to have many organizations within our community that play a role in providing recreation opportunities for our residents. There are many groups that fall into this category. Our very own senior center, the Churchville Nature Center, Tyler Arts, Tyler State Park, Northampton Tennis and Fitness, the community youth sports programs, the private dance and fitness centers, the service groups such as the Lions Clubs, Boys and Girl Scouts, and lastly, our Northampton Days Committee. Thank you for all that you do. I also would like to announce that tomorrow night, Thursday, June 23rd, is already the third concert of our summer-long series. This concert features Cool Beans, a great family concert. Also to celebrate the township's 300th anniversary, we will be having an old-fashioned ice cream social. The concert is free and starts at 7:00, so bring your family, friends, and a chair and a blanket to the municipal park amphitheater for a great night. It wouldn't be a summer without a place to swim. Northampton Swim Club, located at the Country Club, offers swimming Monday through Friday. Although we host our summer camps at the pool there, there's plenty of room for others who wish to enjoy the refreshing water. We also offer swim lessons and an aqua fit class, which by the way, starts this coming Monday. Feel free to stop by the pool and see how much fun it can be. Now that the kids are out of school, you'll want to check out the listing of the specialty camps. There are all kinds of great camps scheduled, whether it's in person or virtually. Camps scheduled are acting, archery, art, basketball, chess, cooking, dance, engineering, golf, Amanda, engineering, golf, golf, soccer, and tennis. Again, you will need to check the website for a detailed list of times and dates. Also, if you're planning any day trips or a vacation down the shore, you want to check out the list of discounted tickets that we have. We have tickets for movie theaters, Sesame Place, the Zune, and even to Disney World. Go online or call the office at 215-357-6800 for the complete list. Lastly, I'd like to announce that the registration is taking place for our fall preschool, two-day-a-week three-year-old program. All our other preschool classes have filled, so don't delay if you're thinking about signing your child up. If you need more information, contact Barbara Primavera at the Rec Center. Hopefully, all who will be watching will know what quality programs the Park and Rec Department offers and take advantage of their services. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Paula?
Okay, good. I'm going to start out with the library. The Free Library of Northampton Township Board were in the process of developing a strategic plan. A steering committee was formed to cover preliminary topics to get the process started. We have, we started to have a resource, the Aspen Institute. It's a report for re-envisioning your public library to guide all our discussions and decisions. We've also been working with Bucks County Library personnel and resources and having conversations about various roles and daily operations of the library and the future of the library. This is a lot of important information, and we are going forward to create a strategic plan that we have three meetings since May with the steering committee, and we're going to get things going. And Bill, our assistant manager, is, township manager's been helping also with the library. Okay, the other thing we have is, one second, is the 300th anniversary of Northampton Township. We wanted to thank everyone for last week. June 14th was annual Flag Day, and the ceremony was held at the Civic Center, and it was perfect weather, and we were not in charge of that, but there was a great crowd, and the Boy and Girl Scouts came, and also the baseball teams. Okay, that evening, a history marker was unveiled at the Recreation Center, which identifies the Civic Center as a former Nike missile site, one of the 12 that protected the greater Philadelphia region. Informational panels around the story, about the history, rather, of this site were displayed in, in future permanent panels, and they're going to be placed around the township. Be sure to stop by and take a look at the Civic Center. Okay, they have a wool spinning presentation and demonstration at the Kenny Center on Tuesday, July 26. It's called The Great Wheel, and it explains and demonstrates how clothing uniforms were spun by women of the 18th century. Okay, it's free, so come on out and take a look. Okay, Thursday evenings for the Park and Recreation Site and Seattle Summer Concert is, as Dr. Kim mentioned, and we have the concerts there also, right in the park where the Blue Playground is. Okay, there's much more planned for the fall, for the 300th anniversary. Go to northhampton township dot com to view the calendar of events, and don't forget trivia and stories on Tuesdays and Fridays on Facebook. And we definitely have a lot of history and a mystery gala that's going to take place, so check out the Facebook or the website for that. Okay. Then we have Flag Day, which is, pardon me, I'm sorry. Flag Day, I'm sorry. Flag Day was a success. Okay, I lost it, I'm sorry, guys. Flag Day, I did not attend, it was my granddaughter's first birthday. Okay, here we go. I don't know where it is, I lost it.
We can come back to you if you'd like.
Okay, sure. Why don't we do that?
Yeah, we'll come back.
Thank you.
Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things from the municipal authority. The first related to federal EPA health advisory. This week, the United States Environmental Protection Agency released Drinking Water Lifetime Health Advisories for four per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. This announcement on revised health advisories significantly changes those previously issued and published by the EPA in 2016. Accordingly, the authority will be preparing a press release responsive to this issue. As to the website, I mentioned last month, the authority's new website was successfully launched June 3rd of this year. The rebranding emphasizes the core mission and values of the authority. The Water Smart Web Portal, which I also mentioned in last month's report, was successfully launched on June 3rd of this year for enhanced customer information. Authority customers are encouraged to sign up for alerts and notices based upon your water consumption that utilizes actual results and trends. Knowing I am the board liaison, they were kind enough to sign me up and point out that I use more water than the average in my house, so, as if I didn't already know that. So take it from me, it works and it's accurate. And finally, the Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, the second phase of the Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project was initiated in June. Notices were provided to property owners impacted by the project with a card. The card incorporates a QR image to provide additional information via a microsite. If you just sign that image with your phone, it should take you where you need to go. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I can continue. I did combine the Veterans Administration Commission with the 300th anniversary, so they, they were both entailed each other. Thank you.
Nice efficiency, rolled them together.
Yes. Thanks, Paula.
Barry?
Yeah, the only thing I mentioned, as of, to your point, Bob, the municipal authority actually put me on the alert system, and I got a phone call saying that I was leaking water. And I had literally used $1,100 worth of water. Somebody had put a fence on my property, you know, with a permit, and they hit my water line and stopped the water line, and it was leaking for like 14 days. In 14 days, you know, I didn't realize it.
Wow.
We used $1,100 worth of water.
I hope you're paying that bill, Mr. Moore.
Well, my fence company would be paying that bill. But I know, I think, to be honest, it's, it's good technology. It, it gives you alert, and I got a call right away, and they said, listen, there's something wrong with your property, something's happening, and I was able to stop it right away, things like that, so. So I definitely recommend signing up for it. On planning and zoning, I'd like to report that on June 20th of this month, we had a hearing pertaining to the Wawa in Holland, the proposed Wawa there, and the Bucks County Court of Common Appeals basically remanded the matter back to the zoning hearing board for further consideration and further comments from people. About 40 people came to the meeting and gave various updates and their opinions about it, and then based on the information given, the testimony that was concluded, the zoning hearing board will render a decision on May, I'm sorry, on Monday, June 27th, at the 5:00 meeting. So next Monday at 5:00 in this building, the zoning hearing board will meet and they'll make a decision on, you know, whether they confirm their decision or they defer it, but that's happening. Other things happening in town, there's pending projects. We talked about Project Tonight, Four Houses in Polinsky. There's another three-lot subdivision on Bristol Road and Churchill Lane. There's another big project happening in Holland at the Bucks County Roses property, which is proposing 13 single-family dwellings. That property's zoned, one-acre zoning, so they'll have one-acre zoning lots on that property too. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Barry. I have no report tonight, so I'm going to roll right into the manager's report.
Two quick things this evening. Elm Avenue, if anyone hasn't noticed, has been milled, and our contractor, J.D. Morrissey, is in the process of repairing some of the base. The milling showed us that two feet on either side of a significant portion of that road had no sub-base on it, so we are fixing that with stone base and base repairs. We expect the base repairs to be finished sometime next week, and then our own crew will follow with the wearing course, and we're very much looking forward to having Elm Avenue back in, back in service. And please ask residents, please do not move the barricades and drive down Elm Avenue. It is not safe to drive on, and we've had a number of people have accidents on that road because they went around the barricades when they weren't supposed to. So please do not do that. The other thing I wanted to let the board know is that I sent a termination notice, the required 180-day termination notice, to the NADC museum organization. The Parks and Recreation Board and the Recreation Department is looking to do a study of the 39-acre site where the township has an agreement for a portion of that parcel to be used for the museum. We're looking to do a study of that site to develop- We're looking to do a study of that site to develop future recreation fields. You will have to at some point decide whether you're going to terminate that agreement in the future, but that decision required a six-month notice, so that's been delivered. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. Assistant manager, Bill?
Good evening, the only thing I have to report tonight is we will be preparing the summer edition of the new township newsletter, that'll be hit in mailbox in middle of July, so take a look out for that, a lot of great information in there, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, I'll take that as a gentle push to get my portion done. Solicitors' report, Joe?
The record or the minutes should reflect that the Board of Supervisors met in an executive session for approximately one hour immediately prior to this evening's meeting. Present for the executive session were the five members of the Board of Supervisors, the township manager, the assistant township manager, township engineer, and me. Discussed were two matters of pending litigation and a third matter of potential litigation. No official action was taken during the executive session, and no official action was required this evening as a result of that executive session. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Amanda, engineers' report?
Only to mention, just to piggyback off of what Mr. Pellegrino said, that once Elm Avenue is completed, we'll be coordinating with Public Works to pave the remainder of the roads for this year's plan as well, so they are forthcoming, but we certainly wanted to get through Elm Avenue first.
Thanks, not to pile on, but I understand that there were some cars seriously damaged by trying to drive down the road the last few weeks, when they moved the barricades, the road is really uneasy, uneven, and I think that there's mechanical damage, physical damage was done to some of the cars.
It is dangerous to drive through at this point.
Yeah, so do not drive.
The road has been completely reconstructed and is not safe to drive through.
Yep, thanks, Amanda. I don't think there's any public comment, right, Bill? Anybody want to speak? Okay, with no more business, the meeting's adjourned, thank you.